Okay. In Salar City Board of Commissioners meeting, it's an additional call to order. Commissioner Hauser, if you'll lead us in the invocation.
Good Lord, please give us an open mind when we go over the things we're going to talk about tonight. Let's make good decisions for the people of Salar City. Let's deliberate with each other respectfully if necessary. Amen.
Amen. Good Jonas and the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the clarity and justice for all.
Mr. Patterson, if you'll lead us in the mission statement.
Tom, Salar City mission statement to advance a framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
In absence of Mayor Pro Tim Failey, Commissioner Curtis, if you will lead us, and Commissioner Brown, if you will lead us in the mission statement.
Salar City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a global competitive society.
Thank you all. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Now, do have a few, and they're all on your table as well, but I'm gonna run through them real quick. On the consent agenda, three point seven, welcome center lease extension, three point eight, mountain farms, Salar City Tri River settlement agreement. Under new business, seven point one, position name changes, domestic violence advocate sworn position, anti planner position. And then nine point one, proclamation condemning political violence.
Motion to amend the agenda such as to include three point seven, three point eight, seven point one, and nine point one.
It's been moved upon a second that we amend the agenda according to what is written, all in favor, let it be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
Motion to approve the agenda.
The move upon a second that we approved the agenda, all in favor, let it be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved upon a second that we approved the consent agenda, all in favor, let it be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carried. Presentations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So at the October twenty first, twenty twenty four Board of Commissioners meeting, the Board of Commissioners directed town staff to use criteria options to begin a Salar Board of Commissioners Community Service Award Program. The program was initiated by Commissioner Cindy Bray to acknowledge citizens in Salar City that consistently demonstrated an unyielding dedication to improving their community and the lives of others. Recommendations for the Salar City Board of Commissioners Community Services were made as follows. So as I present our nominees, I'd like for the nominees to come up and stand as I read aloud. For this community service awards presentation, I would like the commissioner to say a few words about the nominee. So Vicky Tobar, nominated by Commissioner Pax. And if you can stand by Commissioner Pax.
Are you guys ready?
Hello.
Good to see you.
Good to see you next to you.
Hey, thank you.
Mr. Frank Clark, nominated by Commissioner Bray. I have Mr. Frank Clark's family, if you'd like to stand next to Commissioner Bray. He's got two daughters, so. Okay, you can stand up here, the daughters are here. Mr. Jonas Nobles, nominated by Mayor Pro Tim Failey. You can just stand right.
He normally sits here.
And then Maddie Sutton, nominated by Mayor Matthews. So I could start right here with Ms. Commissioner Bray, if you'd like to say a few words about Mr. Frank Clark.
Um, I'm Commissioner Bray, for those that don't know me, and this is Mr. Jonas's daughter Jennifer, and her daughter Pam, Frank Clark's two daughters. I grew up down the street from Frank. He was a wonderful man. He retired from the insurance company, and then he went to Jordan Matthews High School, and he substituted for twenty one years. The children absolutely loved him. I know that because I spent the last thirteen years of my career at Jordan Matthews. He was a good, honest man. His family are good people. They're the best you could find in the community, and I thought he was well deserving of this award, even though he's not not long away from us. I wanted everyone to know that Frank Clark deserved this award.
Mayor Matthews, if you'd like to grab Ms. Maddie Sutton.
My question, where to start with Ms. Maddie? I've been knowing her. Okay, Rosa. I don't know when I did know her, but what I can tell you is she's been a tireless advocate for the community and for the town of Salar City. Maddie was always our go-to person when you needed something done, and she would get it done. Now, don't put a timetable on it, because she's gonna do it on her time, but trust me, it's gonna get done. And it just does me great honor to be able to present her this today. The same, give me my flowers while I'm yet living, so I can see their beauty. So we're trying to give everybody that we possibly can their flowers at this point in time. And I can't think of anybody that has worked harder and done more things than Ms. Maddie, Ms. Rosa said. Thank you so much for your dedication, sir. Next week, because I do know this young man.
Mr. Jonas Nobles, although Mayor Pro Tim Louis Failey was not able to attend, he stated his work preserving the history of our town included, but not limited to, starting a nonprofit for the purpose and his efforts in trying to establish a Salar City museum.
I may not remember about Jonas. Jonas was either sixteen or seventeen and ran for mayor twice. He has always been one of these young people that cared about his community. And when I first met him, I thought, wow, interesting young man. And the more I've gotten to know him and what his work is right now, and the preservation of the Salar City area and community, again, Jonas, we thank him for all you do.
It's Vicky Tobar, Commissioner Patterson, if you'd like to say.
Vicky Tobar. Uh, I've known Vicky for a long time. My work is usually centered around human services, youth, families, education, and Vicky has always been around and has always been involved. She's a strong advocate for the community and knows everybody. In a, in a good way. She's well respected in the community. And anytime, very much like Ms. Rosa, anytime people need things done, Vicky is a go-to person. She's a pillar in the community, and I'm honored to present her with this community service award.
Where's our picture taken?
I've been taking it. So what I want everybody to do is kind of stand together so I can get one great picture. The commissioners, y'all stand up so we can see y'all doing that.
Mayor, who's gonna take credit for the forum change? That was a lot better than last time. I really liked how you. The forum change compared to the last time that we did this was a completely different setup. It was really nice.
We decided at the commissioner being had made several recommendations. It was too, that the last couple were too, what was the term?
Too informal.
Too formal, too boxy.
Yeah.
Too boxy, and so we tried to make it more meet and greet.
Very cool. I like the motion that we open public hearing. R twenty five dash zero nine zero one, part eight.
It's been moved upon a second that the public hearing be open, all in favor, let it be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right. Hearing none, motion carried. Before you get started, in fairness to everybody, the board knows that I was going to step away at some point, and I don't want to hear one and not hear them all. And so this is the point in the meeting that I will take my leave. And so the board knows what is next and what is required of them to do.
Do you have a motion for that?
Yeah, we need a motion to excuse.
I'd like a motion that mayor be excused from the rest of the meeting.
Now, I need a motion for one of the.
They didn't vote on that motion.
One minute.
Okay, vote on your motion. Vote on your motion to excuse him.
Oh.
I'm sorry, get ahead of y'all.
You want me to do it?
Oh, okay.
Now, we need a motion from one of the six remaining, who will preside over the remainder of the meeting.
Make a motion that Commissioner Brown presides over the meeting.
Thanks, Lord.
You have the most, well.
Thanks, Lord. I was going back to screens, but I'm wrong. Sorry.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Hauser. That Commissioner Brown preside over the remaining meeting with Albert Austin, second. What's that?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Wouldn't make a good mayor. All right. All right. Let's go.
Right. Public hearings, uh. Do you have anybody signed up for this particular part? At the end, it's all yours.
Thank you, members of the board. This is case R twenty five dash zero nine zero one. This is a major modification to a proved conditional zoning that was done in April of twenty twenty three. April seventeenth, twenty twenty three, to be exact. It's for parcels one three, one three six, and eight zero three zero two. It encompasses one hundred and seventy six point eight acres, and the purpose is a major subdivision of five hundred and sixty residential units. A reason for the major modification is the applicant is wanting to amend the conditions that were approved, approved back in April twenty twenty three to remove the use of apartments as a permissible use and to remove the references to the original facing plan. Also to revise the concept plan to equip just attached single-family dwellings and townhomes, and a total reduction of the number of proposed units. Get it next slide. So under the original approval, they had a total of seven hundred and seventy six units, which included two hundred and eighty eight apartments. Those are being moved to all the units, will be either attached, single-family, or townhomes, for a total of five hundred and sixty units. Which equals about three point two dwelling units per acre. So you can see with the new concept plan, the area that was apartments is on the east side of Lane Jordan Road. This area will now be single-family dwellings. You can see the current zoning. It was approved as a rezoning to R three C back in twenty twenty three. And it's basically surrounded by AR with some OI, probably commercial down the street. Future land use map, as this is medium-high density, with the top corner as neighborhood, neighborhood center. The medium-high density is primarily housing options served by public water sewer located near major roadways, multifamily and attached housing types. Areas in the ETJ should have medium densities and single-family residential with medium lot sizes, and assist to integrate space in the design as much as possible. The planning board heard this on September eighth, and there was a seven-zero vote to recommend approval to the board, and there was no public comment presented during the meeting. If it's time staff, take any questions.
Please, board.
Why would change?
I would prefer like the applicant to answer that question when they come up.
Over here. Would you like to speak, sir?
Thank you.
We'll give you a name and address for the town clerk, please.
Evening, board member staff. Mark Ashness, LJ Engineering. We have offices in Chatham Park, and then our main office is in downtown Raleigh, three oh one, Glenwood Avenue, Raleigh, North Carolina. And that's a great question. So our client has several pieces of land in that sort of western area, which is designated as a growth zone on your land use plan. And a couple of those are closer to the sixty-four corridor, and we think the apartments would be more viable up closer to sixty-four in, in, in a future phase, not associated with this project. Our client for this project, Dr. Horton, as they were going through their marketing and reacting to sort of demands, that sales demands they expect, they just didn't see the apartments in this location so far removed from sixty-four as being viable. And so they asked if we could switch that to single-family lots where the apartments were located. So one of the interesting things, I think, about the plan is we had several parks and open space on the original approved plan back in twenty twenty three. We've maintained all of those, those features to the plan. We've just reduced the overall number of units for the project. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Another one question. What is your timeline on this development?
So we've actually submitted, like, the, the first submissions to the town staff. And so we were waiting for this action tonight to continue those submissions. So our expectation will be to submit the remaining construction drawings later this year. And, and then we're working with Tri River on, on the water and sewer availability as well at this time.
So possibly constructions next year.
I think that the permitting will take us until next summer, and then next fall would be sort of the earliest that you'd see trees coming down, and then it'll take a good year just to kind of do the horizontal infrastructure. So you're really, you're really looking at twenty twenty eight, which is, you know, after the wastewater plant expansion is accomplished, before you'd have even initial homes. And, you know, the difference between single-family and commercial, like Wolf Speed, for example, you know, when you, when you open a shopping center in Wolf Speed, you flip on the lights and you're functioning, right? When you're doing a single-family neighborhood, it takes time. It doesn't all happen on day one. It could be a sort of a reasonable growth pattern of, you know, a hundred-plus units a year over time. So it's, it's not immediate impact.
Reason why I ask is people are asking us, you know.
Yep. We're, we're excited to get the drawings back in.
These could be low-income homes.
No, I wouldn't characterize them as, I, I'd characterize them as market rate. So they're, they're the kind of homes that someone that's working in the community already, that's looking maybe to move up to a newer home, right? That, that would be someone that would be considered Wolf Speed employees, the Toyota battery plant employees, all of those kinds of folks would, would, you know, I think this, this neighborhood is attractive.
Do you know what maybe an average cost? Just roughly.
If you were talking, Reese is here with Dr. Horton, and he could probably speak to the, if it was today, right? No one, we don't know how much inflation there'll be or lack of inflation, right?
Reese, will you give your name and address to the town clerk, please?
Yes, sir. My, my name's Reese Bridges with Dr. Horton, address two thousand Area Boulevard, Morrisville, North Carolina. So that's a tough thing to Mark's point with, with inflation and everything, but I'd, I'd say you could look around at some of our other surrounding communities, price pretty much according, according to them. That's got to range anywhere, I, I really hesitate to even throw a number out, but like, if you look at our website, that's the best place to find some similar housing products we'd be offering here.
If you could just give me your best guess.
So.
Right now.
Anywhere from the, 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 the twos to fours, but it all, all depends on pricing. If we were to look a year ago, that, or two years ago, that, that changes quite a bit from today, so that's. But it would be, it would be market rate, and again, our, our website would probably be the best place to look for market. I, I hope that answers your question.
Kind of so. Thank you.
Anybody?
Yeah, quick question. So I saw a reference here to the ETJ, but these five hundred and sixty rooftops will be in it, right? That's our tax base?
Yes, I mean, this is part of the town of Salar City.
Okay. Sure, thank you.
Anybody can know it? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion in a sec. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Read in a second.
Opened public hearing for.
Oh, we got it.
I'm getting ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning case R two five dash zero nine zero one.
Third toward the end. It doesn't have the page number on it.
Six pages from.
It's near the back.
Yeah, near the front of the back.
I don't have a page number.
It's got a proven red on the top.
Okay, I see. Approve.
You just have to read that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed major modification to R dash three dash C conditional zoning districts on parcels identified as one three, one three six, and eight zero three zero two to amend the approved conditions, development layout, and uses permit within the, the development. I need to read the rest. To approve the following statement of consistency and reasonableness. The zoning map amendment is reasonable, it is in the public interest, and will benefit the surrounding community by allowing small-scale commercial uses that support the area in accordance to the current land use plan. Is that? Did you have to read on? Read number three, too. All development of the parcel would be subject to all provisions of the Salar City Unified Development Ordinance. This would include screening, traffic access, parking setbacks, height limitations, and other development criteria.
Second.
All right, we got a motion.
I think you need to read the first one.
I need to read the first one, too. Let me go back. Okay, all right, that's two, three. Let's go to one. The zoning map amendment is inconsistent with the twenty twenty fourth future land use map. However, the amendment will be consistent with the adopted land use and zoning of the surrounding area. So.
You got a second. All right, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those put.
I move that we open public hearing for R twenty five dash zero nine zero two.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Public hearings, uh. All your team.
Members of the board, this is case R twenty five dash zero nine zero two. This is requested by Everest Park LLC for a conditional rezoning from A R to A R conditional district. This will encompass parcels one three eight five eight, one three nine one three, one three nine one one for a total of twenty seven point one seven acres for the use of major subdivision, eighteen residential units. Access for the property will come from Jones Road, SR one one two six. It will have future access connectivity to the Everest Park development to the east. Through the lots, we utilize the cluster option that will allow reduced lot size, but requires additional open space in the amount that they're reducing their normal lot size. The concept plan, the road comes off of Jones Road on the north. Two cluster lots, so the ones in the middle there at the first curve. Your lot will be at least one acre. You see the connectivity to the future connectivity to Everest Park to the east. Zoning is A R. Most of the surrounding areas, they are, except for the area zone for Everest Park, which is R six and R ten. The future land use has this area marked with rule on your land use map. All the surrounding area is urban. So for rural, it is mainly low-density residential, larger lot developments, detached, single-family dwellings in areas where water and sewer is not available. And developer is proposing septic and well for this development. The planning board heard this on September eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. It was a vote of six to one to recommend approval to the board. There was some discussion on the connectivity to Everest Park, and there was no public comment presented during. If it's time staff, we'll take any questions.
Can you tell us more about the discussion regarding connectivity to Everest Park?
It was more of the timeline of when that would occur. And it would take, that's part of Everest Park that's more in the phase two, three range, so it would be a little while before that connectivity happens. So it would be a little while before that connectivity happens.
So this is, this will be private, they'll, they'll be able to start this pretty soon, correct?
Pretty much, they will be able to start sooner than dealer developments. Any questions?
Anybody sign up for this? Any questions in the audience?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Close the meeting.
Second, madam.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Make a motion to approve ordinance. Sorry, I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map commitment rezoning the property identified as parcel one three eight five eight, one three nine one three and one three nine one one from agriculture residential A R to agriculture, agriculture and residential conditional district. And approve the following statement of consistency and reasonableness. The zoning map amendment is inconsistent with the twenty twenty four future land use map. However, the amendment will be consistent with the adopted land use and zoning of the surrounded area. Number two, the zoning map amendment is reasonable. It is in the public interest and will benefit the surrounding community by allowing small scale commercial uses that support the area in accordance with the current land use plan. Number three, all development of the parcel will be subject to all provisions of the Sauer City Unified Development Ordinance. This would include screening, traffic access, parking setbacks, height limitations and other development criteria.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Move that we open public hearing for R two twenty five dash zero nine zero two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
And members of the board, this is case R twenty five dash zero nine zero three. Brought by Ellis Development Group for additional rezoning from A R and R ten to R three conditional district. Uh, parcel one three seven nine six, one three seven nine seven, one three seven eight two, six seven eight eight seven, eight three nine oh one. Totally a hundred and forty seven point seven acres. Uh, this is also for a major subdivision with eight hundred and seventy one total residential units. The main access will come from Harold Andrews Road to access points. Uh, there will be an additional emergency access only point from Austin Avenue on the south side of the property. Uh, the reason that's emergency access only is those roads cannot be improved enough for the additional traffic that will come from the development. Um, there is an existing cemetery on site and, uh, we did send this out for T R C review and received comments from Chatham County Historic Association regarding the best practices for its preservation. Uh, you can see on the concept, this is kind of turned. Counting clock was ninety degrees from north, north is facing to the right. Uh, so the access shows some there on Harold Andrews Road. There is some flood plain and streams on the property that they will need to meet all required buffering and no lots may be permitted. Special flood hazard. Our current zoning is, like I said, A R, there is a little sliver at the bottom, the zone R ten. That is all one parcel deed wise. The reason that part in the bottom is slivered off is because that's within the city limits. So in order for tax purposes, they have to separate the parcels. So they only charge taxes on the portions that are within the town limits. Uh, the green star is the cemetery location. Um, it is a small cemetery. I think the latest was eighteen eighty eight when someone was actually interred there. Uh, and it has five graveyards. Uh, the future land use map has this area as medium high density, some areas in green around the top and side that are conservation areas because they're within the flood plain. Again, medium high density is housing options served by public water sewer. It's located near major roadways, multifamily and attached type housing structures. Then the ETJ, then you want medium densities, um, and single family residential on medium sized lots uh, with integrated open space. But again, since they're requesting water and sewer, that is a automatic mechanism to be annexed to the town. This was heard on September eighth, twenty twenty five planning board meeting. This was a six to one vote to recommend denial to the board. Uh, the major concerns were traffic along Harold Andrews Road. There was some discussion on the cemetery, but those questions got answered by the applicant. Uh, and there were no additional public comments presented.
Have anybody signed up for this?
Yes.
Keith Robbins.
Good evening, council. Hello. My name is Keith Robbins of Strong Rock Engineering Group. We have a couple of other people from our team here as well. So I think, um, Mr. Austin was going to speak first. If that's okay.
Interesting, Stephen Austin. Okay. Oh, you've got his name and address on there, so you don't need that, do you?
Good evening. Hello, I'm Stephen Austin. I'm representing, uh, Henry Austin, who's the actual, uh, property owner of several of the acres of land in question right now. He will probably be here, uh, maybe he had a serious health issue. He's now an assisted living facility. Uh, so I just wanted to come and make sure that, uh, I do a decent job of representing why he thinks this is a good move. Uh, he's owned this land for as long as I can remember. Um, I know there's a pond he used to go fishing on many, many years ago, fifty years ago or so. Um, and all I ever remember him talking about was, uh, hey, don't just give this land up, you know? And he talked about what we should do in the next generation and the generation after that. About three years ago, uh, he kind of changed on that. And according to him, he kind of see where, uh, the world was going and knew that change was coming inevitably. So he wanted to be part of, uh, making the change right. And after turning down many other outfits, he settled with the Ellis team. Mainly because I think he felt like they had the same, uh, goals on what to do with the land that's so dear to him. The area that he grew up in, graduated high school from and had a lot of his family history still here. Uh, he spent time building houses around here as his grandfather, as his uncles, as his cousins. So they have a lot of interest in this area. Um, and of course, the family has a lot of, uh, legacy throughout the area. So I just wanted to make it clear that he thought this was a good thing, uh, for the future of Sauer City. And, uh, headed this organization fairly well. He turned down a lot of people before he even agreed to think about this. So just wanted to share that and thank you for your consideration.
Ryan Ketchum?
I'm glad Mr. Norris go back first, sir, and then I'll.
Hi, I'm Keith Robbins with Strong Rock Engineering. We're three oh five Church and North Hill Street in Raleigh. I'm the lead designer for this project. So I want, when we talked to Mr. Olson, he said, there's four things that we really wanted to do on the site. One, preserve the integrity of the creek stream and the natural area. And if you look at the site plan, everything that's on the other side of the creek, we're leaving as conservation itself. The second thing is we wanted to be able to provide, uh, enable new homes for new residents here in Sauer City to kind of give the next generation of Sauer City residents view. And it's also very important for us that the cemetery be maintained and preserved. And so if you look at the site plan, it's actually in a circle park. So we're leaving it alone and we want it to be there for future people to research it, understand who was here in Sauer City two hundred years ago. And that becoming kind of the icon of this community. We don't know really who's actually buried there. By leaving it alone and maintaining it gives a lot more people research opportunities. And we wanted to, um, create a special area for the entire town at this new northern edge to allow, um, new residents a new place to live. We consider this, we talked to staff for the last year and a half or so to make sure that one, we're consistent with the master plan, consistent with all the new goals and objectives of the town and also make sure that this will be a good place to live. So if you have any other questions, we'd be more than happy to take them. Representative Ellis Development is here, his name is Brian Ketchum.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Brian Ketchum. Most of you received an email from me. I was, I was the one that got beat up pretty hard on planning board and the only thing that really gave me was traffic. So I just wanted to stand up. I'm a, I'm an environmental engineer, kind of a typical developer as an environmental engineer. But I take land legacies and environmental protection very seriously, even as a developer. And, um, yeah, I took it a little personal at the planning board and I didn't really get a whole lot of feedback. So I just wanted to kind of touch base with you guys. Traffic is all we've heard about. So I sent you guys a copy of the T I A, right? So the level of service on all the roads out there is A, B, which is, which is very good. I get there's a trucking company out there, there's some stuff going out there. We do increase traffic in the area. It's three hundred and seventy houses, not going to try to lie, not going to say we don't. But there was two recommendations for us to mitigate our increase of traffic where we took level service to B and C, which is still very good. And we've agreed to both of those. Um, talked to Tim, probably be required to do an updated T I A because timeline wise, I know you folks have asked, we're years away from getting this thing going. This is rezoning for us, we're just getting started. There's a sewer moratorium, so we're twenty eight, twenty nine, where anything's out there, we're just trying to get started. Find out what we need to do to get started, give Mr. Austin a future, something to do, legacy to leave his land. So I'm, I'm just here to answer questions. They're the smart ones. I'm the plug and sugar behind the computer. I'm here to answer any questions I can for any issues you might have. Just wanted to offer that to you folks if there's something I can help you with.
What was your name again?
Brian Ketchum.
Brian. Um, what, what was, was it Hill Street? Was that the one that was only going to be used for emergency, but it's not feasible for a second?
It's Austin, that's Austin.
Austin Avenue.
Yeah, and that was at the town's recommendation, just because they're in such bad shape, it can't be improved, so.
There's no other like adjoining, uh, adjacent parcel or anything like that for another point of entry there at the south, southeast part of the parcel?
Not that we've been able to find yet. Mr. Austin and Mr. Uber donors out there have looked extensively, I've looked extensively. Unfortunately, there's nothing available now. Uh, we're required by the U D O to stub different directions. We will continue to look because it's, we're developing, not a builder. So our end users also will want to make sure there's ways in and out. Again, this is just rezoning, we're years away. We're going to continue looking for ways out, I can promise you that. But right now there's none available. So as a stopgap to meet the ordinance and allow us to get started moving forward, we worked up the offer from the town to use Austin in the short term, but we'd love to find another option.
Yeah, I know those roads over there are not in good condition. That's a separate issue. So the only point of entry would be on Harold Andrews, Andrews Road then?
Yes, sir. And that was, that was one of the roads that we went up one, went down one level service grade. And so there's a turn lane recommended at the front to move our traffic out of the flow. So the two lanes that continue to flow and our traffic move out. And we've agreed to do that, so.
Can you elaborate on the B and C? I did not get the T I A, so I don't know exactly what you're referring to. Um, just, excuse me, I wanted to reinforce what Brian's saying. There's actually two entrances on Harold Andrews Road, so if you go back to the site plan, there's actually, uh,
It's on the same street, but yes.
On the same street, there's two of them there. So we actually have three entrances into our site, two primary public entrance. And then the third would be the entrance to the south as a connection to the neighborhood. Okay.
All right, thanks for clarifying. It's on the same road is why I didn't clarify that. And what was the question before?
Oh, the, the B and C.
Oh, so when you do a, I don't know, you do a T I A, it's part of the requirements, they go into traffic counts. You have to do them when school's in session. And then they rate the level of service on the roads. A obviously being the best, which most of the roads out there are level X, some of them are level B. And then when they do the traffic build out counts, they then tell you what the level of service is. So you have an idea of, you know, how much you've degraded the use and the servability of the road, right? So most people dream of As and Bs. We're in the type of area of the state where As and Bs are pretty common in rural areas. Bs and Cs are still pretty helpful. I mean, most populated areas have CDs and Fs roads for the most part. We don't want to get you guys there, but they're still fairly rural roads. We're having an impact on them and we're mitigating what was said in the T I A. So I'm not sure what else to do. Like, if there's other things, we'll, we'll look for other options out, but right now there's just not.
As far as the town being responsible for that road, because it would be annexed, we'd have to, we would have to maintain the road, right? That would no longer be DOT.
Harold Andrews Road?
Yes, sir. That'll say, say with the DOT?
We have to get encroaching with DOT for the widening and all the, all the improvements all has to be approved by DOT. All the utilities in the street gets approved by DOT. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Well, so that's a great question. Um, the, the conversation circled around two things. One was cemetery and the lady on the planning board was confused which cemetery it was. So once we figured out where it were, we told her we're preserving it, we'll leave it, you don't want to touch it. That went away and everything else was trapped. And, yeah, I understand why a couple of the folks that live in this area and they don't want to see extra traffic on the street. I get it, but I tried to dig deeper and say, where are the T I A, what do you not agree with, what's the problem? I couldn't, couldn't really discern, discern kind of where, where the problem was. So I, I went, I went to Tim and said, and he said, I'm not sure, the T I A meets and maybe you need to do an update when you get closer. And I said, okay, we'll do that. So not sure. That road right now is a level service A. B at the worst, which basically means there's limited, limited slowdown of stoplights to get onto the road at all. Three hundred and seventy one houses will make it, so without a doubt. The turn lane at the front and the other intersection improvements will be three two. I feel will mitigate that.
Yeah, uh, two questions. One, this back to it right, uh, into District two. Has there been any communication with the neighbor, with the community in that area about?
Which, which area, sir?
Uh, Austin Avenue, Hill Street, Solid Street, Hot Street.
Uh, I personally have not spoken to anybody in the neighborhood. I know that we have talked to all the neighbors through there. Excuse me?
So we are aware, um, because it was, because it was discussed some, I think, last year. Last year or whatever, I, I know the community is aware.
Yeah, I, I didn't personally talk to him, I was just to be honest, I haven't personally talked to him. I know when the conversation started with Mr. Austin, we spoke to a majority of the land owning neighbors to try to find another way out. But I personally have not spoken to anyone in the neighborhood, no.
Has there been any resistance from the neighborhood or?
Not really.
Yeah, and we are going to make sure that this is clearly an emergency exit. I don't know if Tim has any plans on collars or block or any way to get in with secure access. But it's not going to be, there's not going to be monuments on it, it's a big wide road. I mean, we're, it's going to be for emergency access. We're not going to direct traffic in that direction. There's really no reason to, where it is, the location of the neighborhood, it's just we have to have emergency access on several roads and then zoning it out, so.
So, so going up in that area, the only thing that I remember as far as the cemetery, um, I never went out there. But the, we always called it Moses graveyard. That's what it was.
Is that the markers in there, is that one?
Yeah, that was what it was. It was, it's behind, um, it's back in the woods.
Yes, ma'am.
Back in there, but it was called Moses graveyard. And so.
I, I don't know the origins of it. We've tried to do, we've done archaeological studies, we've found a few graves out there. We run into this all the time, not to get off on a tangent, but they allow you to move graves. But especially this age, you don't move anything but dirt. And it's just, it's kind of disrespectful, honestly, especially if there's families still in the area. So again, our goal from the beginning was to leave them alone, leave them where they are, make them an element of the neighborhood. Was there a law with what I got, so.
Well, and I think that's what they did at Chatham Middle too, because they had that graveyard out in the front of the school. And so they have the fence around it and everything, so.
That's the plan here.
It's been done before.
And if there's more history that we can help convey, I mean, we'd love it, we just don't, we don't have the history in the neighborhood, you do. So, you know, we're going to preserve and do what we can, leave that history there.
Yeah.
One more, sorry.
Yeah, there you go.
Traffic on Harold Andrews Road.
Yes, sir.
Has been a, you know, a point of contention for. Has been a, you know, a point of contention for, for a while. I think I was on the planning board when some of these developments originally came through a few years ago.
Yes, you were.
And there's, there's, there has been a lot of concern about, uh, Andrews trucking trucks and mountainous trucks and so, and the big 18 wheelers that, um, come up and down Harold Andrews Road as a potential safety risk.
Yes, sir.
Or how, um, did I get a chance to read?
No, that's fine, no, you're fine. I know, it was, man, it's fine.
I, I would like to take some time to read through it, but I'm just curious if you have any initial thoughts about, um, about some of those traffic concerns as it relates to?
Yes, sir. I mean, I don't know Harold Andrews Road. So my concerns for traffic are safety of people that move into the neighborhood we develop. And, and engineering wise, I'm an engineer, right? So I see the trucks out there. I know that something has to be done to keep those things from crossing paths. So the TIA recommends a turn lane in front of our neighborhood, which means everybody that comes in gets out of the way of that flow. They're free to, they're not stopping with a truck having stopped behind me. Obvious improvement, right? We agree to that. Acceleration lane coming out of the neighborhood, so you're not jumping out right in front of the truck. Obvious improvement, we agree to that. That's the only two improvements on Harold Andrews Road, because there's really nothing right there at us until that next intersection. Which also has a recommended improvement, which we're willing to make. So again, I'm not arguing that drivers won't go up or that there's not a lot of trucks on Harold Andrews. I just think we're doing what it takes to fix it and mitigate it. And I'm willing, if there's something else, I'm willing to listen.
And a roundabout's not feasible for that area? That'd be too, too much of a hazard for large trucks.
DOT's tricky with those. They don't like to pop them just anywhere at major intersections, sure. On a, on a travelway like this with such a high level of service, doesn't really make sense yet. I think it's a great idea, maybe neighborhood across the street, one more down the road in the future, but those are tricky things to get approved. So, but a great question.
Just curious, the follow up on your question. We do a lot of projects that are kind of on the edge of a community where we have older roads and newer communities. A lot of these older roads are, are at 45 miles an hour. And so we're seeing a lot of towns we work with to reduce that speed limit to 35. And that would again, help slow the speed down, make the road a lot safer. Work with DOT. This will always stay a DOT road, it's a state number. And we're really at the mercy of DOT bureaucracy to tell us what to do and what not to do. So DOT says tomorrow we want traffic circle, we'll get a traffic circle.
That's kind of a question I had. With it being a two lane road, have you approached the DOT about expanding it to possibly
It hasn't, yes.
More lanes?
That's part of the TIA process. And so the answer right now is we haven't, because DOT has not warranted the need for us to expand it.
Even with according to this
There's also transportation.
Extra 3,890 daily trips, they still don't see the need.
3,890.
Or constitutes the need to do that thing.
To give you an example, a two lane road can handle up to 10,000 trips a day in the DOT manual. So we're working with them and so as the state DOT will tell us what to do, then we will follow and do that. In many ways, DOT won't do anything until you make the first decision. So that's where we're at here today, is for you to make the first decision and sets everything else in motion and allows us to then negotiate with DOT or DOT now saying, this is what we'll do, and then we'll do it.
Yeah, and you guys really have the, the driving seat on transportation improvements with your transportation plan. So whatever your transportation plan is out there on our frontage, we're required to meet your future transportation plan requirements. So whatever your town has told us they want there, we've agreed with it on our side of the road. So if DOT raises that bar, you raise that bar, then we don't have to do what we're told to do. But again, that's, we've done, we did the TIA. They told us this is what it's going to take to make it right. I mean, again, not to diminish, but 3,800 trips a day, 24 hours a day, that's less than one car a minute. Now they concentrate over traffic times and it gets a little worse, but that's why the turn lanes, things are mitigated those short periods of time of the day where you actually get traffic interactions, so.
Reducing the speed limit does not always work, the only I know because of.
Well, I'll make one more, one more statement. While it's helped a lot is DOT requires us to design all of our improvements for 10 miles an hour over what the actual speed limit is. So we've not designed all of our improvements for 55 miles an hour, known to be speed. So if we reduce the speed limit to 35, we're still willing to design them to 55. Which makes them even safer, because even if people are speeding, the improvements are still designed for higher speed than their traffic. So that's why I feel like we've tried to do everything we can to mitigate the fact that Harold Andrews Road, Harold Andrews Road, not sure what else to do, but broke.
Jack, do we, do, do you remember, did we reduce the speed from 45 to 35 on Harold Andrews Road already?
I think it was up to DOT. I, I looked that up before we came in. They said if N C O D cannot ensure, sites may say reduce speed along Harold Andrews Road, which is a rec, was a recommendation from the planning board, it got approved by the town. So nothing official to reduce it, it was just as a.
So it hasn't, it's still 45?
It's not, it's not been changed.
But we did approve it?
No, we approved the, uh, consideration of recommending it be reduced in working with DOT.
That's a good question. Is that, is that a flood zone?
There's a
Parts of it are, yes.
There's a strip flood through there. If the strip flood's under there, they will have to avoid and mitigate it around.
Look at the plan, you see how the, uh,
That green swap, you showed that green arm that's going through there? That's what I'm saying. That we're leaving is open space, designing it right.
So it's going to be concerned.
We can't put lots in there, we can't.
And we should say the other side of that flood zone we're leaving is up there's woods as well. So when you look at the plan, you see how the the red area, the streets that actually overlooked the creek. And then everything to the north of those is all going to be open space and preserved. So that's the trade off that we're working there. So if the flood zone protected and enhanced, some, a slight few folks will have a nice view of it from their house above, on the hill. And the rest of it will stay woods.
That's what happens when you're developers and brown members.
So we, um, we were far in excess of, of your open space requirements.
You guys estimate that most of your cars will be going back toward, like not necessarily towards Silk Code, but back toward, toward old 421. I think that's where most of the entrances and exits will be.
Yep, that's true, yes, sir.
Like maybe up Piney Grove Church Road up to 421 or 64 from old 421.
And I believe all those intersections were in the TIA, I probably remember, I could have to go back and refresh.
I think that, that in the Harold Andrews Road and Solid City Snow Camp Road is, is one of those areas that has been an area of concern due to the, due to that, it's a
Lack of, lack of being able to see. But I think you all are on the upper end.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't know what's out there, yeah. Yes, sir. No, I appreciate the background. I don't know all that stuff, so I appreciate that. That's what I've been hoping for is conversations, and thank you very much.
I mean, this is in such a preliminary phase for you guys. It may change in a few years, because you're
Change 20 times within another.
Well, you're talking about 371 homes and we, we can't necessarily guarantee the sewer allotment, so the impact may be less than what you think it may be. Because you can't necessarily build that many houses at this point.
Yeah, and if we can, it'd be three years from now.
At least 2027 or 2028.
Yes, sir.
Till you get out of the, uh, expansions done.
And that's, we, we're aware of that. Again, we're just trying to get started. Figure out, I mean, this, the land use map tells us this is what you want out there. We're trying to put something out there. We're protecting the areas. We know there's some traffic. We're trying to mitigate it. We just want to start the process.
Doesn't that incentivize you though to reach out more for different points of, like, of another parcel, like on a different exit entry, like?
I mean, I, I don't know how you can incentivize more. We've already talked to everybody and we will continue to, I'm not sure.
And everybody reach out to you though? All those property owners, especially along Solid City Snow Camp Road?
Some did, the others we reached out to ourselves. You know me, I'm not afraid to send a letter or email or make a phone call, so.
Now, we've had discussions with the adjacent landowners on the plan and what they'd want to see and, and if they wanted to participate in selling or not.
And anytime it puts as much money into some infrastructure, you want to be as much of the area kind of as you can. So we've talked to everybody to try to round this out, get another entrance if we get 421 lots. You know, so we've, we've talked to everybody and we've expressed that we want them to come in, either as a road through or, and just no interest yet. But we continue to do so. Because again, once we put this much infrastructure in, parcel right next to it becomes way easier for us to add on to and expand. It just makes sense.
A hundred foot, is that a minimum for DOT for this turning lane that you guys added?
Uh, that's just, that's the storage calculation they did based on the traffic count and stuff. Yeah, that's, we, we can't touch, we're hands off, they kind of do their, and here you go, sir. Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, that's answers, I got plenty if you want them.
Is there anybody that, that's on this list with the adjacent parcels who's on that list, or is that everybody? Commissioner Brown? Was there anybody, was there anybody else on that list, like the people that were?
I'm waiting to call Mike, I'm waiting to call him.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mark.
Could it put me, that's a question?
Sir? I got a, I got a person signed up.
I need to go, I can't stay here. My name's Mike Levin, with 343 Roland Marsh Road, which is, this is going to affect me and my uncles and everything, everyone here. I don't want to, you know, I'm just letting y'all, I don't want to look out my window and see a roof, 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 roof. And I mean, I, I'm not a, I'm not a city slicker, I'm a country boy. I like country. Uh, and I'm not all about money. This, this game just, to me, it just, it just sound like this is all about money. And I like looking out there and seeing the trees. And I, I, I look at a lot of stuff there. The traffic's going to be terrible. In Ohio, where I live on, across from Charles Marsh, there's a bad curve right there. Coming around that curve is bad. And I don't care what they say, and I don't care what the state says, they don't travel that road like we do. And the other end of the road, people's going to go down that way. And either way you turn out, it's a bad intersection. State don't deem it a bad intersection yet, but it's a bad intersection. I know several people had wrecks down there. It's bad. And y'all know that, if you live in this area, you, you know that. We keep pushing all these housing. And I know Solid City's got to maybe grow some. But we've always been a little tight knit community. Uh, I don't want to see all that go, I don't want to be a carry, I don't want to be a marsh field. I don't want to sell these roots. And it's not only, what, what they keep saying about the environmental impact and all that, I mean, all this wa, all that ground, how's it going to affect me where I live? You know, they're going to be digging and, and moving dirt and doing all that stuff. And I also think about a lot of, all the wildlife that's out there that we'll lose. I mean, it's, it's not about money, guys. It's not about money, it's about the way of life. Solid City is just a small community. I mean, if it goes up, I'll move, that's fine. I have no problem getting out of Solid City. But I'm just saying, you know, we got to look at, we got to look at, to me, the bigger picture is, I don't care about the water runoff. I care about the community that we live in. I mean, I know this has been approved over here and that's, you know, I might say that don't have anything to do with me because I live over here. So I sure don't want to see all these cars down, going down that road. I don't, and it's just going to get worse and worse. And if one household has a man, a wife and two kids, well, those, you know, those four cars, times that by, how many that? If home's going to be there, you know, I mean, I'm not a slick tongue. I don't, I'm really nervous being up here talking to you, I'll be honest with you. That's where I'm coming from. I, you know, it's going back to Dalton Charles Land. I live right across from Charles, which, I mean, like I said, that's all I see is the woods. And I, I've been to that uh, cemetery back, we, we, we grew up on that hill. I've been back on that cemetery several times. And I know they're going to say they're going to put a fence around it. And I know what, you know, you said they put a fence around it. You know, we've got some cruel people in this country. And if you open something like that up, you don't know what's going to happen to it. And then, they're buried there for the rest of their lives. They just need, they need a rest. They don't need to be, they don't need to be pointed out that there's a cemetery right there. Just let them be. Let them live where they're at, let them live where they're at. That's all I got to say. I just worry about the wildlife. All the other stuff that happened. And yeah, trust me, I, I come out that road every day. And if you don't jump out there, somebody's going to nail you. It don't matter if it's 35, nobody's going to do speed limit anyway, 35, 45, they're going to nail you. If you don't get out and go, you're going to get hit. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Jimmy, do you, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm off. I have a question about the, uh, runoff and in a, for the last sizes. Anytime you're coming from, in R10, coming down to R3, you are really conditioned that you, a lot of houses in that area, whether R10, I think I, my house is R10. And you get down to R3, for the distance between the houses and apartments, it's, it's no distance at all. And I'm going to, while we're conditioning everything, making everything so tight now, where our community really it's not about the quality of life, quality of living. It's about contracting, squeezing the new house as much as possible. And don't even talk about low income. So that's a, that's a, you know, that's a joke. There's no low income houses around. I'm saying, they'll build a house for a buck for a good speed and all this. What about the citizens already here? What are you doing for them? Well, they, they chose to want to do something about, you know, a house in Solid City. The cost is getting astronomical. So we've got to look out for our citizens that are here already. As far as the water now, we're always having water problems. And once you cut out all the trees, water's got to go somewhere. Direct now, we're having too many water problems to cut out all the vegetation. And what are you going to direct the water to? I know where I live, and that's creek down there behind the Marshes property over there. Where are you going to direct that to? The lady right here, her house is over there, off Hoggard Street.
Austin Avenue.
Austin Avenue, okay. It's right behind Hoggard Street, right. But where the water running to, where are you going to direct that water to? We know where Rocket really is down here. That's where it's going. So before it get there, what kind of damage is it going to do, once you cut out all the vegetation? Because nobody is doing, our community, I've spoken about it before. Every drainage over there in our community stopped up. So water running all over people's yards, under their houses everywhere. So what do they do here on the space with a lot of damp water under your house? And for the city, to me, you've got to try to deal with the community and find some kind of solution to wet them out. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Anyone here?
Do you have any last one of this, this round?
The neighborhood below, south of that, has a lot of flooding issues. Austin Avenue, Hill Street. Yes, sir.
I understand the concern about all the clearing, I get it. But there's a requirement in North Carolina that we control storm art to pre and post development rate. So we're not allowed to release water any faster post development than it is released pre development. So that's why ponds, storm art ponds exist, they hold the extra water and release it out of the orifice at the same amount, at rate that it left before.
It'd be the same today as it was then.
Yes, sir. The water will leave longer, for a longer period of time, because we're retaining it, but it will leave at the same rate, so it won't overwhelm downstream facilities. So just so you know, that's state requirements. So, thank you very much.
I moved it really close, public hearing.
I think this is a tough one. I, I kind of want some more time to think about it.
So you want to table this?
You can table it, but if you decide you, since you closed the public hearing, if you want to hear more testimony from anybody, the neighbors or whoever, you'd have to readvertise. All you'd have to do is readvertise the public here. But you can table the your own debate and the decision. But if, if you decide collectively, or a majority of you do, that you want to hear more testimony, you'd have to re, readvertise and everything. You may not need that.
Can I ask, can I ask?
Because you just closed it.
Yeah, we got to, so all, all I wanted to do in this process was sort of get feedback and try to make revisions to the plan. So I've reached out to these folks individually. I know some folks are uncomfortable with that, so not a problem here, but I'm willing to table for the next month. Can I speak to these folks individually and get feedback? Can I speak to these folks individually and get feedback outside of the meeting? So I know how to make revisions, come back.
Yes, that's the legislative decision you can do.
Yeah, so as long as it's not quorum, so it's individual. So I'm more than willing to table and have conversations with you folks about ways to improve this thing. That's what I've asked for from the beginning, I haven't really got it. So if that's the solution yet, I would love to table this and get a chance to speak to these folks further. And if there's things I can do, I'm the worker bee. If I can go out and get things done to make you happy, that's what I'll do. I just, I, I just need, I need something to work with, so I can help Mr. Austin move forward, that's all.
I can tell you, right now, I have a problem with the traffic, and it doesn't seem like you have a solution to that.
So what, did you read the TIA?
I read it, but that doesn't mean that.
What did you have a problem with?
Well, the, the, the amount of traffic on that two lane panel.
Yes, ma'am.
Is.
So this is the traffic council, if I wanna bring you, say, some data on traffic council and typical two lane railways, that's in the bottom five percent.
Some data from the, the D O T, say what they're gonna do to that road if this is approved. But you say, this has to be approved before you can do that.
Well, so we have to follow the transportation plan, which is the town plan. So we're doing everything you've agreed that you want out there, the town has asked us to do out there. And the D O T's asked us to do out there. We can't kind of raise the bar. It's done by the T I A, traffic council. They, I don't know what to tell you, I mean, we agreed to do everything that we've been asked to do. I mean, hey.
I'm concerned the public hearing's been closed, William. He's continuing to talk.
That's why I should raise that. If you wanna table.
You wanna make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Or table, I mean, like I said, I'm open.
Let him continue talking. I make a motion to reopen.
I've never seen that done. Can we do that?
I, I don't know. I mean, I've never entered.
We'll be able to table for two weeks and just see what. Yeah, we speak separately, and that's what I'd love to do, because I, I, I would like to help both of us understand.
I'll make a motion to table this decision until our next meeting.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, table? Any opposed? Right. Thank you all very much, I appreciate the time, thank you, sir.
So, what you have in front of you, we're not, these are existing positions that we have. Drew is here tonight representing the police department. If you have any questions, I need a little more help. So what we, we currently have is the domestic violence victim advocate, advocate position that we're requesting the title change. Chief Reagan has requested that we may have a sworn position, and it was a non-s sworn. And if you can read the second paragraph, according to Chief Reagan, the reclassification allows for one person to investigate the domestic violence case. Advocate for the victims, before the police department had a detective investigating the matter, and a domestic violence advocate working with the victim separately. So what he's saying is that, in the past, with the past position, it made it hard, because they connected with this domestic violence advocate. But there's only so mu, so many things that they can do with a non-s sworn. So with a sworn, they can, one person can do it all. And it also gives the position more accountability. And Drew, can you elaborate a little bit for me on sworn versus non-s sworn?
Yes, ma'am. So, changing this over to a sworn position, like you said, it gives us greater accountability. Because in previous cases, we've had people, victims of crimes, they've come and reported things to the domestic violence advocate. And sometimes that message gets lost between her and the sworn officer as far as the investigation goes. So as far as continuity of the investigation, it just makes it a lot more streamlined process to leave a sworn position as opposed to a non-s sworn.
Were there ever any situations where they would say they had abuse and they didn't wanna file a police report? So that would no longer, they would no longer have anonymity, right? It would have to be reported. Do you think, do you think it would be better, you're talking about accountability, regarding like they do and conduct themselves to a higher degree of ethics, based on what happened previously?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That's the rationale?
Absolutely, because the, the standard for a sworn employee is a state standard as opposed to a civilian employee. So they're held to a higher standard.
More consequence?
Yes.
Okay, I like it. Do you foresee any hesitancies from the community with a sworn police officer responding versus a, a, an unsworn police off, I mean, an unsworn victims advocate who, who, who may not be?
Yes, sir. So we've taken that into consideration in this position, even though it's gonna be a police officer position, it's gonna be a plainclothes officer. So it's not gonna be a uniform showing up to, to speak with somebody, because people are a lot more intimidated to speak to somebody in uniform as opposed to a plainclothes officer. So what we've noticed with detectives is, they're more willing to speak to a detective in plainclothes as opposed to a uniform.
I would agree, we're, we're still working domestic violence, many, many years. Preferably a female?
Yes, sir.
Latino? Being that most of these cases are disproportionately from this background.
Right, so we have to open the process up externally as well. We do have a couple of internal candidates who were interested in applying for that position.
And, and Latino or, I shouldn't say, but bilingual is preferred.
Yes, absolutely. And we do have candidates internally that meet up.
We can just interrupt.
Per the E E C guidelines, we have to, because we have to post it internally and externally, so.
How does it pay, compare as a sworn officer versus a, is it unsworn, am I saying it correct?
Yes, sir. So a civilian employee compared to a sworn entry-level police officer, which is what this position's gonna be, is slightly higher for a sworn police officer. But you get that added accountability.
Slightly higher, like a couple thousand. Also consolidating the position too.
Wait, yeah, yes. That first one, and then I'll explain the second one, we need renaming.
Make a motion to approve domestic violence victim advocate to domestic violence officer slash victim advocate sworn.
Tim Gardner still here? I always like to have the department heads, a representation that can kind of help along with these. So our second one is Tim Gardner, who was our former senior planner, that is now our planning and community development director. So with his acceptance of the director position, it left our senior planner position vacant. So one thing that Jack and I did was, we went and spoke with him, we had meetings with him, and said, what do you need for your department? We wanted to give him the opportunity, what do you need? He's been, been with us for quite a while now. So he, he really, in my eyes and Jack's too, he felt that he, he knew more than me and Jack, what he sees every day, what's going on. And so he came up with, didn't really need a senior planner, or have, have someone more of just a planner. And you know, if we lucked up and got applications for a senior planner, that'd be great. But going from a senior planner to a planner position really enabled us to open the applicant pool and have different people applying with different backgrounds and planning. So Tim, do you wanna add anything to that? Is that pretty, did I sum that up pretty good? So I did a small paragraph that just kind of tells you basically what we've plugged into the job description and what this person will focus on. They'll focus not only on the planning portion, but they'll also focus heavily on the community development needs as well. And so support not only zoning permits and developments and stuff, helping Tim, but really get into the community development with grants, transportation, this C D B G, revitalization efforts and affordable housing. So this person will kind of take over some of the things that when Sarah becomes the downtown.
Manager.
Manager, whatever, whatever her name change is gonna be, that this person will take over that part too. So, so that's what we're asking tonight, is senior planner to title change to planner.
So, so the, excuse me, so the planner will take over the responsibilities left over from Sarah vacating into the downtown, Sarah vacating the community planner. And moves to downtown, whatever a little bit is left over from those responsibilities, this planner will pick those.
And, and Tim will have a, a long list of things for them to do as well, so, as he gets more into acclimating into the director role, so.
This will really help us not have to hire anybody except Sarah to do the job, so make it a lot easier. We don't have to have that separate person. What's the salary difference with the senior and the regular planner?
We're looking.
Is that pretty big?
Yeah, we're looking at the minimum of around a twenty thousand dollar a year savings, just coming back in that budget, in that, that department's budget. And that's low in figure, so.
Are we at all concerned that quality of work is also gonna decrease?
No, not at all. So we're very confident, because Tim, again, we gave Tim the opportunity to come to us with what he, he felt like the town needed and the department needed, and what he can still, of course, he's gonna be over everything in the department, but what he can still manage, you know, and not overwork himself, that he can, so. Tim, are you okay with that? That's what we talked about.
And the plan is to, you know, the candidate, we're gonna find the best tricks for them to start out with, and then bring them up to speed on the other stuff as they come. So it's mainly fighting the candidate and figuring out what.
Senior planner, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, you know, I don't know much about planning. Senior planner doesn't have any certifications or licensures or anything like that, that we will be losing by not hiring a new senior planner?
I, I didn't.
I think that's more of an experience than it is anything. So a senior planner is like a planner of three.
Planner one, two, and three is where senior planners, it's like being in here, it's a mutual experience.
With code enforcement, the planner, the director, and who was the fourth in the department?
Four.
Sarah. Oh, Sarah is still part of that, okay. So it'll just be three then, at one point, after you hire this person? It'll only be three in that department?
Yeah, well, Sarah will remain.
She's still in the planning department.
So it's gonna be.
She'll have that dedicated job. I think you guys have already figured it out.
I believe that we, we, the senior planner position back down to, well, approve the senior planner position to the planner position.
Real quick, Commissioner Brown, when you tell me you should have a five forty-four ending September the thirtieth, that's for my finance director. Four, five, six pages there, and then the calendar that I usually provide is there, one highlight for events. Wednesday this week, domestic violence awareness, uh, candlelight vigil, it's gonna be downtown. On Thursday, nine, twenty twenty-five stated our schools events in Pittsburgh, it's at nine AM. On the twenty-fourth is the annual fall, uh, fall in country tree, at Ray Park. And lastly, October twenty-seventh, which is a Monday, the Main Street Public Meeting. So we had one about a month ago, they're having a second round. That's also gonna be downtown, I think you made it six o'clock, so public's invited. That's all I have. Kim, have you got any comments?
Yes, so we have in our Thanksgiving dinner, and it's gonna be at the Fitz Center, it's gonna be on Tuesday, November the eighteenth, and it's not on the calendar. Yeah, Tuesday, November eighteenth, it's gonna be at the Fitz, that's for town staff and board commissioners. And that's gonna be start at eleven AM till two, two thirty PM, Jack, and that way it's gonna send. Yes, of course. And there may perhaps some interest in another kickball, people wanna do another kickball day.
It's gone, please, don't worry.
You can't play this town.
Jack can't play this town?
I think I should have changed it to dodgeball.
Yeah, we're gonna wait, uh, let's see, December, I know I keep my head, we're, we're gonna set out reminders for this, but Tuesday, December sixteenth, there'll be our Christmas, our employee Christmas party and dinner. That's Tuesday, December sixteen.
At Best Foods?
Yeah. It is very identical to last year.
It was good last year.
It'll start at eleven AM to run until two thirty.
So both Christmas and Thanksgiving, two days.
November eighteenth, this will be Fitz, and then December sixteenth will be Best Foods. That's all I have. But, but, and again, reiterate, Friday, this Friday is the trunk or treat at Ray Park, and Brianna is gonna be Captain Hook. Oh, last but not least, Brianna, this past Friday graduated from clerk certification school. I'm proud of her. So now, she's gonna start tracking her hours and everything, so she can start her C M C, getting there with that, so. I'm, I'm really, really, really proud of her, so.
Commissioner Brown, she mentioned about a costume, she didn't mention hers.
What you going on?
Wendy. Yeah, and Lori's Peter Pan.
Oh, okay, okay.
May I ask a question before you read the proclamation? I've had several people ask me about the lot downtown, the fence is gone, so they're really curious what's going on, and I'm like.
I called the owner and talked to him about what was going on, I sent the fence removed, and we had gotten calls about it, so. I think it's about where the, working with the Christmas tree program in the downtown. I think that's why that, and so they're gonna accommodate, work with them on that. But as far as his plans, I, what I was told was, I am, they have gotten the commitment from Sanford for utilities, that's one agreement it worked out, and they are wanting to see some additional, and say it the right way to say it, will speak to growth, watching that closely to help them before they start with one of their revitalization plans. They're monitoring that.
Okay.
So they're just speculating, so we're not gonna see anything?
That was a lot of fence to take down, it was expensive, I wouldn't have took it all down, I'd just put a Christmas tree up there.
When they, when they get their stuff together, they know what they wanna do, do they come back with some kind of, they wouldn't have to do any rezoning, what, what, what kind of approval? They won't need anything from.
I, I think, I think they're not putting together a construction drawings, sort of plans, and turning it into the planning office, and getting their zoning for them, because it's, it's all permitted by Ryan.
Yeah, did you guys have a chance to read what I sent you? Did you wanna add anything? Is it okay the way it sounds? So last June, what happened to the Congresswoman or Senator in Minnesota really shook me, because what happened was, she had voted on something that was extremely controversial and consequential. And her and her husband were both killed, based on just how she voted. And like, we're talking about, Mr. Marsh here doesn't want trees taken down. We're worried about, you know, those kind of decisions that we make, not nearly as consequential, but certainly, we're probably gonna piss people off, and we can't make everybody happy. Basically impossible, but there have been so many things that have happened this in the last year, civil strife is here, is abundant. I don't know what we can do as elected officials to defuse it here, except to condemn it. That's why I, I had, I had an A I-type program type this up, I made it more concise, because it was way too long. And I, I'd like to read it before the board here, it's a proclamation condemning political violence. Um, and I, I'd like to read it before the board here. It's a proclamation condemning political violence. Whereas the foundation of a free society depends on peaceful discourse and mutual respect. Political violence erodes our republic, divides communities, and endangers lives. And we have a bullet point list of all the events that have happened basically since twenty seventeen. The shooting of Representative Steve Scalise at a congressional baseball practice, the twenty twenty two attack on Paul Pelosi, husband of then House Speaker Nancy Pelosi. The December twenty twenty two and twenty three attempted assassinations of four different Democratic officials in Albuquerque, New Mexico by shooter. Solomon Pina. The twenty twenty two attempted murder of Justice Brett Kavanaugh. The one, the two, two thousand twenty four attempted, um, excuse me, assassination attempts on former President Donald Trump. December twenty twenty four murder of United Healthcare CEO Brian Thompson amid political tensions. The April twenty twenty five arson attack on Governor Shapiro's residence. The May twenty twenty five murders of two Israeli embassy staffers in Washington, D C. The June twenty twenty five flamethrower and firebomb attack by Egyptian national Mohammed Sabri Solomon. On elderly Jewish participants at a pro-Israel hostage rally in Boulder, Colorado. Injuring at last, at least eight people, and I believe some of them have died because of their burn injuries. The twenty twenty five June assassination of Minnesota House Speaker Meredith Melissa Horton and her husband Mark. And this twenty, excuse me, September twenty twenty five assassination of conservative activist Charlie Kirk at Utah Valley University. Whereas these incidents driven by extremism and polarization demand collective rejection of violence in favor of dialogue and accountability. Now therefore it be resolved, Donald's not here, so may I just put my name here, Towness Tower City. Commissioner Alec Hauser along with the Board of Commissioners. By virtue of authority vested in me to hereby proclaim, one, we condemn all political violence. Including attacks, threats, and property destruction targeting individuals for their beliefs or roles. Two, we demand accountability through equal application of the law. We reject the notion that the ends justify the means. We call on all to engage respectfully and nonviolently, strengthening our republic. And lastly, we honor all victims of political violence committing to prevention and unity. Witness whereof, I have here on two set by hand and cause to seal the Towness Tower City to be affixed this twentieth day of October twenty twenty five.
That was gonna be my comment too. I really appreciate the Department of Reports, uh, that helps keep us up to date, I think.
Well, I've been trying to close the meeting full time.